Hi.
Hi. But considerations, whatever.
Brainstorming at best, but I mean, this has got to be a much more formal order and policy. And so.
Hey, how's Dan Allen?
Tim.
Tim.
Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry I didn't show you guys that.
Well, it's my first planning commission I've been to, so.
Oh, okay. Well, this is my third. All right.
No, and he's doing a great job, doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
So I don't know that I should make copies of these. It's such an archaic copy. It'll probably take a half hour to make one copy.
I don't, I don't think we're going to get into that much detail. I think, I think what we do is kind of talk through these three options, then we talk. And.
You're saying I should talk less?
Oh, I'll just read the screen.
I can still. I don't know if I'll do bottom sided is the only thing that's kind of hard here.
Yeah, usually we're facing this way.
I know.
I like it.
This really caught me off guard because how do I work my computer from this distance?
Oh, you don't have a remote button?
Well, I have a mouse, but the problem is, is.
When you need to push a button, you can't.
I need to push a button, I can.
Oh.
And whatever, I don't know. Yeah.
They make little, little, um. Oh, I don't know what they're called, but one of them must have.
Mm-hmm.
But they actually have a laser on them and so you could point and.
Oh, I think it's not the pointing, it's a matter of, uh.
Little computer.
Moving it up and down.
Okay. Huh.
It, I've got to be exactly right points for it. And I don't want to spend more time moving stuff around than for it.
Is this their usual procedure, videoing meetings?
Uh, this is my first planning commission here, recording.
Oh, is it?
I come to all the township brag or board meetings.
This isn't a hearing, this is just a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, are you usually videoed?
No.
So we know next time we better dress up.
Yeah.
It generally points in their direction.
May I ask some questions of you, sir? Are you just a private individual or are you the Midland Daily News?
Um, I am, I'm not the Midland Daily News. I do run a YouTube channel, it's called Midland Michigan Media.
Oh, do you?
Yep.
A YouTube channel?
Yep.
Ah, I'll have to look it up.
Sure, make sure you subscribe.
And so what do you, what do you cover?
I just about anything and everything.
Huh.
Um, over the weekend, I was at the No Kings Rally in Midland.
Okay.
Just documenting it.
Okay.
Um, like I said, I come to the board meetings here.
Okay.
Um, a few other townships, uh.
Do you ever go to the Baghead County?
I haven't been there yet. Theirs are usually held a little earlier than these ones, so it's harder to get to them.
Okay. So is this a hobby or a vocation?
It's a hobby slash. I like documenting government officials.
Oh.
You know, there's a lot of people, like today, there's, you know, a lot of people won't be able to show up.
Oh, so they can go back online.
Yep, and I'll try to share it to like Edenville Strong page, so I, you know, people in resident in the township can. Go and view and see what's happening.
Well, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
I know, they're so nice.
It was just working fine, and now they're trying to make another copy.
So what's new and exciting for you?
Oh.
Oh.
I don't know.
Okay. Two minutes.
Two minutes, go back.
You left your computer off and then kind of you asked about some parceling numbers.
Well, you guys, we might have to share.
Sorry, what?
I think it was.
So I got.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
Okay.
It was during the time.
Are different than the ones that.
Oh, they do a swap.
Oh, maybe it's because.
Different? Yeah, there's, there's one major deal. I'll talk about it. Okay. Then I have pushed it over, I think I copied all you guys.
So did you get it?
Got a whole nother layout, hey, how you doing?
Hey, Jim.
Hello, Jim.
Um, I had art forward something to you guys, but I got, that was. I forwarded the first one was wrong, they forged it second. But.
Did you happen to read this stuff before you prepared it? Y'all are sorry, I've just.
Yeah, so. It's, uh, that's what I'm saying, I, I had a rough round and I was reading something else. Okay, so I corrected it. Well, I mean, they're just step by step, this is what he's there and how it all works and stuff, so. Um, cause I had, I've never done this before and had to do the research and I'm like, oh, I'm not doing that. Yeah, right, so let me see. Yeah, there's, there were some things that. Yeah, it seemed weird to just like school a cover letter and send it like to just them, so this is probably a little bit more. Um. Well, there's exact legal steps we have to say. So.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm trying to just get some more agenda.
I've got them on you.
You do?
I got them. Yeah, I forgot Kim's name.
All right, well, there we go.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you got one?
Thank you.
Oh, we have to at least do the ones that I made.
All right.
Let's get this meeting started. Uh, get my gavel for that. So this meeting of the Edenville Township Planning Commission is now in order. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is really to keep track of where we are with our two of our major projects. Project number one is the short-term rental, and project number two is our master plan update. So those are really the focus of today. Um. Please rise and let's, uh, pledge allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, take your seats.
I'm gonna give you guys.
No. Some addresses.
I think there's two of them in there. All right, um, we need to do a roll call and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
I will take minutes.
All right. So Crystal Starkey.
Here.
Lynn Arnold.
Here.
And Jim. Swan. And Dan Allen is here. Kim Borchardt was unable to be here, she's out of town for work, so, but we have our core. Continue to meet. So the next thing on the agenda is the approval for tonight's meeting, looking at the agenda. And I know. These guys have all had a chance to, an opportunity to look at it, were there any changes need to be made?
No.
And under, uh, 8A, preferred.
Mm-hmm.
And then under 9A2, I think I would put the words if any in front of as. Or maybe if, if any in front of the parentheses.
I'm sorry, did I do that?
You do? I didn't have.
Okay, so we got a couple versions.
It's okay, it's fine, it just, as long as there's a uniform one that we have written, no problem.
Okay. Um. Give me your, what was the first one you did?
Uh, 8A.
Yeah.
Preferred but not required. It says, please state your name and address, preferred but not required.
Okay. Mine says discuss and agree on definition of short-term rental versus long-term.
That's what I'm looking at, 8A, right here.
Okay. Okay, so let's give you the real.
That'll be great.
Okay.
Oh, you had that.
All right.
I had an old one.
Yeah, you're working on one.
Okay.
So. Um, do I have a motion to accept the meeting agendas as written?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Lynn? So we need to vote on that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All vote. The ayes have it. So the meeting agenda is approved as written. All right. So item number five, reading and approval of the previous meeting minutes. And I will read through those the best I can. Uh, Thursday, September 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, the meeting is called the Order at 6:03. We have a pledge of allegiance, there's a roll call. Um, three of the five item members were present, Jim Swatten and, uh, Jim Swatten was here, Lynn Arnold was just a little bit late, I was here, Kim Borchardt absent, and Crystal Starkey was here. Three of five, I'm roll call, we had our call. Introductions, Dan Allen, the PC Chair, and Secretary Terry, Jim Swatten, uh, our member and GBA rep, Crystal Starkey is our board rep, uh, introduced themselves. Uh, we had a, Jim moved to approve the agenda, Dan seconded, voice vote, all in favor, motion passed endlessly. Did reading and approval of the August 25th, 25th meeting. Crystal moved to approve, Jim seconded, roll call vote, um, was unanimous. The focus group activities was the key for. For our September 4th meeting. And we're going to spend a little bit of time later on that, but the reality is the, uh, focus groups, we had about 15 members that came. They did a great job, they came up with over 30 items or ideas for the future. And they worked through with identifying what they thought with the top seven or so. And that's what we are going to be working with as a planning commission, to make sure that we're hearing the community. Reason we did focus group is because we've done past in the past surveys with virtually, you know, no results, and the cost of doing those exceeded the benefits. So very happy with the results that we had for the focus group. Uh, the highest voted ideas were keeping a small town, keep the atmosphere to be small. Uh, make sure we have reliable utilities. Okay, when we're doing or did that, it was really up for 20-year future, okay, it was what we're looking for. So reliable utilities, including the electric, the internet, the cell network. Uh, and the key with that is, with always, already been so many changes in the last few years with cell phones and everything else, how are we going to keep up with the future? We need to work with details. Make sure we've got good fire and EMS equipment. Uh, they wanted nice restaurants. They wanted a boat kayak rental launches available. Thought it would be great to have recreational bike and walking paths, and part of that was down to the tin of water, the rail trail. Updated a safe playground and parks. Uh, another one is a community gym, similar to the Midland community gym. And pretty much just want to make sure we've got good community events and the public is able to use our recreational facilities. So for the focus group activities, they ended at 8:45 with a recap by me. And, uh, at that point, we restarted our, or finished up our special meeting, which is what that was. Jim moved to adjourn at 8:50, Dan seconded, voice vote, um, major, so. Are there any changes to the, uh. September 4th meeting minutes? I hear none. Um. It was accepted. So the minutes are approved as read. All right, next item.
Right, we have to take a place though. I'm moving to a.
Thank you. You know, I'm new to this game. We're getting through it.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. All right, next thing. Um. Is public comments. So, um, at this point, if you have any public comments that you would like to, um, present to the planning commission. Um, I'm going to ask that you state your name, your address. Uh, please note that each person will be allowed one opportunity to speak, and the limit is three minutes. Are there any women who'd like to speak at this meeting? I'll tell you what, slide it well. Seeing none, um, I'm going to close the public comments, um, at this time. All right. So now we get down into the heart of the business, which is our unfinished business. And the first one that we're going to talk about, and by sticking with the, uh, the agenda, is the short-term rentals, which is our priority number one. Uh, we're hoping to have that completed by the end of December, and Jim and Lynn are our project leads for that. So the first thing that, because the short-term rentals are a. There's some confusion of what is it, short-term, what's a, how does it differ from a regular rental? And so we thought it would be really critical that we define short-term versus long-term rental. So that we all make sure when we're talking rentals, we know what we're talking about, and we start referring them to short-term rentals and long-term rentals. So I have asked. Um. Jim and Lynn, um, I know you came up with a, um, definition for short-term.
You guys have printed copies of that, any friends?
Well, I have printed two, and whatever I had, I turned me over.
Yeah, I pulled that into it, yeah. Thank you.
So I basically, well, we basically came up with three different definitions of what you could do for, um.
No, let's go to what's short-term rental.
A short-term rental is like an Airbnb. That you can rent it for two nights or three nights, or up to, uh, what I would consider, or we consider it's up to 27 days. Anything over 28 days then would be considered a long term. Because we have one month.
Um, so I'm going to add a little bit to that, what I've thrown in. The short-term rental is defined as, Lynn said, is a dwelling unit or portion thereof rented for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive days. Okay, pretty standard. But I'm going to add in there, I'm going to suggest we add in here, that short-term rentals typically offer flexible lodging for travelers and temporary residents. So they're temporary people living in community for a short time. Is that consistent with what you guys are thinking?
I would think so.
Okay. And the reason I thought that's important is so that when we really bring it out, people understand that difference between long-term and short-term. Okay, um, so with long-term rentals, you want to go through your definition there?
A long-term rental is, right, what you have here.
Yeah.
Dwelling unit, a portion thereof rented for a period of 28 consecutive days or more with a stable tenant, occupancy and predictable outcome. That would be considered a term now.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept these two definitions as the official definitions to be used for our short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay, Lynn moves, okay. Do I have a second? Yep. Jim? All right, so we have a motion on the floor. That the definition that we will use as the planning commission for short-term rental. Is that it is defined as a dwelling unit or portion thereof rented for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive days. And rentals typically offer flexible lodging for travelers and temporary residents. The definition of a long-term rental is defined as a dwelling unit or portion thereof rented for a period of 28 consecutive days or more with stable tenant, occupancy and predictable outcome. So do we have any discussion on that? Uh, let's put this to a roll call vote. Crystal?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Dan is yes. So we now have definitions of that. And having a good definition is important because. We need to also make sure we. we need to also make sure we don't have a conflict of interest. Okay, and so, because I know that we have rental properties, but there are now long term rentals that some of our commission members have. They don't have, unless, we're going to walk them through, but do they have any short term rentals? If so, it would possibly be a conflict of interest. So I want to officially kind of head that off a little bit. And according to the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. In paragraph nineteen. I'm sorry. Paragraph one twenty, I'm sorry, section one twenty-five, point three eight, one five, under conflict of interest. It states failure of a member to disclose a potential conflict of interest as required by this subsection constitutes malfeasance in office. Unless the legislative body by ordinance defines conflict of interest for the purpose of this subsection. The planning commission shall do so by, in its bylaws. So we have bylaws that were approved on August twenty-fifth. And what I'm going to do is read the definition of conflict of interest. And I need you guys to individually say yes or no to answer the question here. Okay? So using a conflict of interest, and a minimum includes the following. All right, do you have a case concerning a, of a short term rental? Are you, are you involved with any short term rentals that you own?
I answered no.
No.
Crystal?
No, sir.
And Dan has no too. Do you have, let's see, work on land owned, I'm sorry. A case concerning work on land owned by him or her that has a short term rental. So are you working on anything that's related to a short term rental?
My answer is no.
No.
Crystal?
No.
Dan has no. Uh, are you involved with a corporation, company, partnership, or any other entity in which you might be a part owner or a relationship where he or she may stand to have financial or service related gain or loss related to a short term rental?
My answer is no.
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 And no. A case which has an action resulted monetary or service related benefit to him or her related to short term rentals.
No.
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 And no. A case concerning his or her spouse, children, stepchildren, grandchildren, parents, brothers, sisters, grandparents, parents in law, grandparents in law, or members of his or her household involved with short term rental.
No.
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 And no. And a case where his or her employee or employer is an agent or has direct relationship with a short term rental. Employees or employer. And Dan has no. All right, so those were the definitions that we had to check with. And given the fact that we've now gone through this. I would like to put it to a vote that we I'm sorry, can I have a motion that accepts that none of us have a conflict of interest with short term rentals?
Second.
And let's do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Dan, yes. Crystal?
Yes.
That passes. So the reason that was important and it was very detailed is because there have been a number of attorneys when short term rentals come out that have used that the planning commission did not confirm that they had a conflict of interest. And therefore, you know how some attorneys can be, so that was a legal step that we need to update. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, we have our definitions of short term and long term. We have assessed whether there was a conflict of interest. And so now, I need Jim and Lynn have presented us with some general options. Talk through those at all? I'm not anticipating that we vote on anything, but it's just more of a discussion points today.
Well, back to the survey night. I believe it was still ended up like fifty fifty. It wasn't on that, so. So we went through and there's three different approaches you could take. You could take a conservative, a middle path, or even something a little more lenient, which I have some written on here. This is all take. Sure. You want to make a copy of this?
Yeah, you want me to?
So researching, where did I go here? Crystal Lake Township, I just used Michigan communities that had adopted STR regulations and what they've done. And Crystal Lake Township, Long Lake Township, that's on my travel city. Spring Lake Township, that I believe is also on my travel city. More conservative regulation would be allowing only in limited zones of lakefronting commercials. Township wide cap of up to five percent of the total residential parcels. That would help out with middle state inventory. Annual license required with inspection and fees that are involved in that. Mandatory initial and bi-annual safety inspections. Occupancy limit of two adults per bedroom or septic capacity. Off street parking required. And a parking plan submitted with a license. Quiet hours, no outdoor amplified music, events prohibited. Your local contacts would be within thirty minutes and a twenty-four hour availability. Subject and lake protection plan required for lakefront rentals. I really don't know what that means. Graduated penalties, warnings, fines, suspension, relocation, minimum stay requirements of three nights. And grandfather STRs based into compliance of one year. That is the most conservative approach. Then there's the middle path, allowing STRs in most zones. Caps may apply in sensitive neighborhoods. Annual license moderate fee and display number on listings. Initial safety inspection, reinspection every three years. Occupancy limits of two adults per bedroom, two guests, septic tank compliance required, off street parking required. Quiet hours eleven to seven. Local contact or property manager within sixty minutes of the residence. Enforcement via progressive discipline, warning, fine and suspension, and a minimum stay of only two months. And.
So do you have a listing of who has done what examples?
So I believe so. I believe that they are in order better here. Crystal Lake, Long Lake and Spring Lake.
Okay, so for A.
And the more permissive would be STRs permitted by right of all residential lakefront zones, subject to licensing, known numerical cap. Registration ensures oversight, streamlined licensing process to a low annual fee. Basic safety, self certification required, smoke detectors. Occupancy generally tied to bedroom count, but flexible with proof of septic capacity. Off street parking just encouraged. Quiet hours from eleven to seven. Noise and trash regulations enforcement of general township code. Local contact required, remote response acceptable if effective. Enforcement through compliant based fines, repeat violations and may suspend the license. And a minimum stay of one to two minutes. Hosted stays, like flexible. So that is three different ways you could do an STR. But with an STR, then you have to find somebody that's going to do the inspections and collect the fees and monitor all of it. Comes along with.
A lot of extra work.
A lot of extra work.
Yeah. So you may be asking, why are we even considering short term rentals? Because at some point in time, we're going to be forced to by state. Okay, so we need to be able to have our plan in place for how we want to do short term rentals. And that we're going to have to have. Where, we'll try to figure that out, but not too concerned about the where as much as we are. Or at least for me, with what are the requirements for making sure that they're properly maintained and the public or their neighbors or whatever are harmed by it, so. Any suggestions on how you want to proceed with this? I mean, today, we're really just trying to get these out.
Okay, can I interject a few things? I've done a lot of research on this
Yes.
over the last several years and recently because of the, this discussion. Much of what we have listed here, unfortunately, is really difficult for townships to regulate and enforce. For example, I like a lot of what you have listed on all of these. I'm just looking at the top one because I'm trying to take the minutes at the same time, but like things like five percent of total resident parcel, that would be difficult for us to maintain and manage. So let's say that we represent five percent and we were to all have, although we don't fix the conflict of interest, but then another person applies. That, that puts the township in a difficult situation, so they can have it, but I can't because the five percent has been capped. What, how do we, how do we regulate that? So there's one. Another thing is the occupancy limit, that's one of the biggest complaints in, in almost every aspect that I've read about from research. And, and the townships will say, similar to what you have here, they'll put some kind of cap on it. But who, who regulates that? Who enforces that? You're really relying on the owner to do that. And if they're maximizing on filling their pockets, then, then that's, you know, it, how, the township doesn't regulate the actual rental. We don't oversee that, the owner does, whether they lease that to a company, a real estate company, or they do it by themselves. So we would be reliant upon them. That's a lot of trust in folks who are clearly trying to make money. The minimum stay requirement, actually the ones I have read, the most conservative are a minimum of seven nights instead of three, that's the minimum that they'll put there. And they, again, are reliant upon the homeowner, the, to
Sure.
the honor code, and which they're finding is not often the case. And, and again, very difficult for the township to enforce. So those are all things to think about. And then, you know, they could say they live thirty to forty-five minutes away. That doesn't mean they're always going to be thirty to forty-five minutes away and, and who's, who's also policing that, right?
So what, if the state steps in? What? What is their enforcement? What are they doing?
All they're going to do is to say, you will provide a place for them. And they may come in. Okay, so last year, they had plans, I mean, had proposals, had a state on them for the entire state on how to implement these. They backed out of that because they realized they were going to design it for a travel city as opposed to Sanford or Heathrow. There's huge differences. And so the state finally backed out of that. But in, with the state law type stuff, we're not allowed to prohibit different types of businesses and things here. So we know that we're going to definitely stop. And we are not, and sure we have.
There's one more thing to the, the, the idea of the grandfather short term rentals being in compliance, that's only if we adopt a zoning short term rental, if it's a police power and or also known as regulatory ordinance. Nothing is grandfather. So that's just another thing to think about to when we determine which path we'll take.
Okay, so I want to suggest that we our next meeting is December third.
I'll make a copy of this for you guys. This is from a, a township lawyer about these types of things and what the way he considers making a copy of it.
Yeah, I was, I've found a few different lawsuits, different townships that have been sued. And, you know, reading through it. I mean, they go to the point where it's part of their constitution and it's, yeah, it's.
It can be a mess.
Yeah.
Layers of complication.
It is layers of complication. It is, yeah, this is a difficult.
And you think you find like, oh, that's the answer. And then you're reading something else and you're like, they've got contradicts, I just.
So on a, the good side for the short term rentals, it can provide the ability for a homeowner to rent out their homes for a short period of time and still make some additional money off of that. So it can be a money gaining type opportunity, especially if somebody's going down the floor. They want to have it for a good period of time. On the other hand, is do the neighbor want people that they don't know in the neighborhood that could be criminals, don't know anything about crime, if nothing's background related. In their neighborhood and being used, using the roads and everything else they've got. So that is the question we always end up dealing with with this kind of thing is you know, can I use the house the way I want to? Or is it the, you know, the public's, you know, we, you know, how are we protecting the public and are we protecting the public? Those things, so there's, this has been a huge issue.
Yeah, right here, this is just next door, Shutter's Brothers. In twenty twenty-three, Michigan Court of Appeals reaffirmed that short term rentals are commercially used rather than purely residential. And are prohibited, restricted, limited to residential use.
And, and that's the state of Michigan, what I've seen in some of the court cases of yeah, it's more of a business than it is residential.
And I'm not, I'm not a tax compuser, and the way I understand it too, is I have a home on the lake and it's paid for. And if I decide to start doing short term rentals with it, I lose my, then I have to pay capital gains back without, when I solve the problem.
One of the things the state talks about too, and I think it's worthwhile considering when we talk about ours, in, in that case, your taxes would come on capped, right? That would be the state's approach is that if you had, if yours is a short term rental, then you don't keep your P R E and it comes on capped every year.
IRS regulation is entirely different between the two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and so is the state's. They are definitely different entities and they're treated differently. But one of the things in the state, the state requires that the owner charge six percent sales tax on everything, even if they get charged for cleaning, all that kind of stuff. And so they've got to go through the additional pay for to do that. So it's a lot of pluses and minuses here and but what I've seen is you got the gamut of areas around tourist areas. They're very liberal about how to handle more of the rural side is you know, charge a annual fee or whatever, so it can help offset some of the expenses for all the inspections and that kind of stuff, so. Yeah, so whatever, so.
There's often just an application fee.
Yep.
There's inspection fees, there's township associated organizational fees, so all of those would be subject to if you feed them and where.
Yeah, one to me, I've always stated, one in my entire life, which is not that long. Yeah, one to me, I've always stayed in one in my entire life, which is not that long, that's seventy years. And it was a disaster. It was in Uvalo, Alabama. And when we walked into the house, the four cords were, you know, wobbling, there was no exit, or the second exit for fire, there were no fire extinguishers. There were extension cords everywhere. They left a bucket of grease in the oven. You know, so there's good reasons to make sure for the safety of everybody that, you know, we include some kind of inspections in there, so. Okay. Can, I guess I'm gonna ask if it's possible that, for the next meeting, which I think is December eighth, that we put together, you know, one of these and the ones you guys think, I would say, because of the, the area, the more conservative area, you know, but the words down similar to some of these other ones. And just something for us to read through and challenge, but, okay, yeah.
I have a couple of examples, if you guys don't assume I can make any copies, but like, this is just, for example, Milton Township. And it's one, two, three, four, five, six, eight pages long, right? You start with, within purpose, then you go into deposition, what terms mean, and it's pretty detailed. This one is something like ten pages, I'm not gonna lie. So I just think that there's a lot of work that will go into that, if you want some, I can make copies, if you have these.
Sure. Or you can.
About it.
If, if you haven't.
I don't have electronic, you know, I'm sure you can scan it, but then it's still, you still have to retype the whole thing. So either way, it's not an electronic.
Sure.
I got them from different folks, I've done, from N T A.
Okay.
So I just have them as a resource that I would use. So I'm sure you can find electronic ones that you could copy and use from, but these are at least useful to review over.
Yeah.
Think about.
Thank you.
Well, I also have a couple copies of the application that one of them used.
Well, I've been.
Actual, I thought that was kind of interesting to, to see that.
Is there anything else we wanna do on the quarter rentals today? I, because our goal is December thirty-first. I don't know that that's reasonable at this point, so.
That's, yeah, that's ambitious.
You know, I, I really kind of think we're gonna need to put it back to probably March.
That's gotta go to the board.
And it's gotta go to the board, exactly. All we're doing is pulling together documents for the board to review it.
Yeah, it has to be something, but if we're left now, it is right now, there has to be something on there that says something about your term rentals in the master plan.
Yes.
Because right now, it's just the twenty-eight days.
Right.
So we're long-term, basically.
Right, yeah.
Has to be something.
We've gotta put that in one way or another.
And it only has to be detailed if, if we're going to allow them, right? Or, and, and if we are going to allow them, then we get into this detail and then we decide, and we have to also decide where. And whatever we put together, the board now will send to legal for review, to, which would mean we're supposed to have it reviewed before the board goes. And so that would also be something to think about, if we could finish it, say, by March, said it's illegal, then the board could be potentially going on.
So if you said, there is no short-term rentals and that could be a, put in there as well?
Yeah, we, I think the problem with that is.
It's too big.
Then, then it's kind of like marijuana growing isn't legal in the local township.
Yeah.
It still happens. So I don't know if I care to be on that as well, so.
I was curious, can I?
Yeah, yeah.
So pushing it back to March, typically, I, I have my, I'll just verbal. Typically, I book up, like, right after the first of the year. And these are people that wanna stay a week and they're planning their vacations, right? Later on, if, you know, if you don't capture your renters early, then it's like last-minute type stuff, which I found is not as desirable, because they want shorter. So with the late coming back, I think it's, it's one of those things that we're gonna miss that moment. And that's why we initially had December thirty-first.
Right.
With fourteen other things going on, I, we just, I, it, it's great that you're here, Jim, because now you, now you got a feel for where we are with these things, the direction.
For sure.
And I think part of, part of the direction will be a little bit more in December, where it's gonna go, but none of us have.
It's not, I'm.
None of us have a set.
I don't know by January, that's, I mean, March is generous in time, I think we could do it for sure, I don't, here, I don't know if that would be possible, but I think we could, I would like to work with you guys, I don't wanna step on your toes.
You know, more, more, yeah, this is a little bit harder.
It is.
And it's so detailed, and like I said, just, and I think like, oh, now I understand it, then I read something else, I'm like, well, that contradicts everything I just said.
That, and who's gonna check on?
And, right, and that's the other thing is, like, right now, we don't have an ordinance in Unionville Township, so here in Unionville, see no needle, Jim, what happens over there? No, I don't, you know.
I mean, I don't want to sit around for, you know, thirteen years.
Yeah, but Jim and I, we're all, I'm in the community, I don't, nobody ever talks about it. It's nothing that's like, oh, my gosh, no, but there's a, there's a vacation rental next door, nobody ever says anything about that. Well, there isn't.
I, I've heard some things, but I don't, I don't.
Well, I sure have.
I don't live near, so I don't.
I'm willing to bet the house that is built next to me will break it a good part of the year, and it wouldn't surprise me if it breaks.
Slam in the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Or use it planning it as a short-term rental.
And part of the discussion too is.
And it's not.
It depends on different, you know, layout, and that's another thing too, right? Like, like, and, and the neighborhood where Dan and I did it, if somebody had that going on, you would know it. It's such a quiet, uh, you know, where I'm talking, often, and, and, and our neighbors aren't that far away, so there's no hiding when anybody, our, my, my neighbors are new and they had some rent, they moved here from Ohio just a few months ago. They had some friends over for dinner, just dinner, and it was just another couple, maybe two, so maybe six people at the most, and I had to turn my TV up, you know, because I can hear them, and it was just a dinner party. And so I just think like, it depends on where, where that is too, and how we. And then what, how, are we gonna write? I thought about this too, like, are you gonna write a short-term rental ordinance for working tested areas? It's like, and you just can't do that, you've gotta decide R one, R two, like, what? And then what does that look like? And try to take all those factors into account and, you know, won't leave everybody all the time, so.
I think no matter, we'll be right up until we go on the legal.
Oh, it has to, it has to.
Okay.
But that's why, that's why I want you all to be aware of that timeframe, so what, let's say we pass it in January, you gotta give the time to go through legal and get back to the board for review. We'd be lucky if it's voted on at the February board meeting, it might, even if we had it done by January, it'd be the March board meeting where it gets funded depends. And then if legal sends it back with enough provisions, it's gotta come to the board to push it back to us.
Yeah.
To, right, so we just have to be diligent, we don't wanna do this twice, or I don't want to, maybe you guys tired of researching all of it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So our goal I have in here is December eighth, to have like, maybe a, a rough draft or even a portion of it.
Yeah.
Like, like I said, some of those are eight to ten pages, if we could get a, some of it in.
Yeah. And we didn't talk through, so, okay.
There isn't, you know, there's, there's other communities that have already gone through this.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can really look at what they're doing.
Exactly.
And maybe even reach out to the board members and see what they would have changed or what they.
That's what I started to read is what, you know, they, I think Larkin Township just had something about updating their short-term rental, or because they realized how difficult it was, they had all these rules in place. All right, it's gonna be a really conservative approach, and then they're like, yeah, force any of it, so.
Right. The other one is I would check with Jerome, because we're on the same thing.
Yeah. I think Jerome, they don't, they, they have a lot, they just allow it. Okay. I don't know if they have anything specific in there.
I don't bet they will eventually.
They just, they rely on the police.
Okay, is there anything else we wanna discuss on this?
Oh, can I come in here that we worked together in the finals, the latter?
Of course.
Okay, so let's move on to master plan update. So I've given you guys the, uh, the results from the document, the results from the visioning session with the focus group. I'm hoping you've had an opportunity to go through it and what I'd like to have is a motion to approve that the master plan, visioning, focus group results on September fourth, or from September fourth, are accepted as written and made available through the township through the web.
Is this, okay, this is.
That.
And is this what I called you about with all the changes that I have made?
Yeah, yours is bad.
No, 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 it was, you did a fantastic job, I just, okay, so this is.
I've made it, I've made the changes.
You made all those, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you're looking for punctuation and spelling errors and stuff like that, I might look at it.
Well.
Believe me, that's, you know, not, this grammar over there, it's a world.
Yeah, that goes. And just, do I have a motion to approve, uh, master plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Second to that.
Second to.
Um, I'm sorry, who made, who moved?
Lynn. Second to. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Let's put a convention.
All right, yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. And believe me, everybody, we're trying to work really hard to get the webpages. All right, so item B two, discuss the source of data that's used. All right. So you guys have seen pieces, parts of the master plan draft, and really, it's mostly just facts at this point, because what I've done is drilled into the, uh, a lot of facts coming into, or coming from the U S Bureau of Census and that kind of stuff about our community. But it doesn't provide the detail that I think that we need that says, how many acres of agricultural land do we have? How many acres of residential two, whatever? How many parcels of each of those? And where are they by sector? And then from that, how many parcels are vacant at this time? Those kinds of information that should be available to us, and I actually had the data for, or from the county, from the G I S, okay, so the data that I had available was from the county's G I S data. There's also data from the county G I S map, which I found out did not agree. Okay, so there were a lot of issues between the G I S data and the G I S map. So what I found on the G I S data, because I don't have the ability to convert map data to data for analysis, so I was trying to use the G I S data. I found a hundred and sixty records of our parcels that had no zoning district listed. Okay, so the data just isn't there. So what I did was went in to the G I S mapping system, found that parcel, and in that mapping system, oh, okay, that, it shows that as an R two, good, and it's X number acres. And so I started writing down, until I realized, no, we have a lot of parcels that are, have more than one zoning district. So we have parcels that are along the lake and across the board, if it's along the lake and it's owned or it's part of the township and not the county or the state, it's an R one, okay? And that's the way it's been forever here. But most of the properties have a tiny bit of, like, around Fox Drive or there's a box room in those, they've got just a slimmer of property that's R one and a whole bunch of R two. And so I didn't know how to handle most of that, so I went into the G I S and I tried to measure, okay, how many acres is it? That kind of stuff. When I'm, my bottom line is, I can't rely that the data that I'm getting from the county is right. So do we just totally not include anything in our map or in our master plan? Or do we just include the best that we have? It's really where I'm trying to come from. Because honestly, the U S Census information's got errors and everything else, but being a data person, I hate when data's not right. And, all right, I just need some, an idea of how to best handle some of those pieces.
Where in the master plan would, would we be including this?
It'll be towards the end of it at this point. I don't, I'm hoping that it's, so it's, it's got the total number of acres that we have by type.
What are you gonna say, you're, so you're looking at G I S?
I'm looking at the G I S data, G I S map.
The county emailed it to him directly.
It's not matching.
Their data's wrong. And they know it's wrong, and they're, it's not, you know. So let me give you an example here. Of one of the properties that actually Jim said to me, I noticed that it was a split parcel. Part of it was yellow and part of it was green. Okay, so I started doing some analysis on that, right? I looked at it in, on the G I S map, first time I saw it, it was R three. The next time I went into the system, it was an R four. Okay, so I have come to the realization that I am not using the G I S map at all for anything, but that we have to go back to what is the official map that had been, that was approved by the township and use it for any zoning type thing. So I'm just giving you a little bit of frustration in some of the issues that we're dealing with that I, that did not know existed. So the first question I have, do we just use the best that we can, or that we have from the data they gave us, uh, in doing the analysis? So part of the analysis, how many, um, parcels do we have? We have almost two thousand parcels. If we go five percent, that's a hundred short-term rentals. Okay, that's pretty darn high. You know, so that's where this kind of information is very important with what is permitted. So that's where I think we need to really, that the best we can do is, the best I can do, unless we wanna hire somebody else or whatever, but I think we still need to have some of that basic information in the play. I think to be able to.
I, I, I don't remember, did we remember that the township board budgeted us?
Oh, we only had a few hundred dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, we, we had a whole bunch in December. So it was, it was twenty-five hundred, okay, and then we, it was.
Okay.
I think it's twenty-five hundred and then, you know, focus group cost a little bit to do all that. So we don't have a whole lot in mind.
Might just be worth to see what the township, I mean, what the township attorney, they have a whole team of folks, maybe this is something they tackled before, I don't know. Or, or, or not, it's just an idea.
And, and is it really worth it for the mapping, the master plan? It's where I'm coming into it.
I mean, you raise a good point, that we have 2,000, if we were to include something, I'm not really in favor of saying 5%, you know, not more than 5% will be short-term rentals. I don't think that that's really something we can enforce and, or even necessarily, but, but you're right then, and that, if that, if we were to adopt something like that as part of the short-term rental, then that number of parcels in R2 or R1 or wherever we're going to allow them in, in our year, our purpose, no, no, those things are allowed there, but like, that's going to drastically alter the number. So it seems like we do want to add that, but how deep of a dive are we going to do there? I don't know, but.
I am confident that it's probably about 80% correct, the data. Maybe 90%.
You've done more work on the matchup than any of us, so where's the question again? I, I, I feel a little bit ignorant that I don't know the answer to this, but is it possible to pass, pass a master plan with, with an asterisk on these, because I'm looking at.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, that's really what I'm doing.
To say, here's what we know now.
Right.
And then allow us an opportunity to work with the board and maybe legal too. And, and then, so my real question is, can we have an amendment? And can you have an amendments or an addendum or whatever language we're going to attach to that to our master plan or like put that in there after we find this out? I wouldn't want to hold up the whole master plan.
No, and, and I'm not going to hold that up that often.
Yeah, right, I agree.
It's just, to me, it's, do we just kind of footnote it? Or do I wipe out all those? My feeling is put that just.
I think we have to protect ourselves in case we do, as the board excites a VUDA percentage or something like that. And we're only thinking about this right now in terms of short-term rentals, because that's.
Yeah, I just.
But it could affect other decisions that the board makes, planning commission, who knows, right? DVA or it could affect a lot of things. And so I would certainly put, at least at the least footnote, and then we could ask, have a formal request to the board to.
Yeah.
Have that run by legal and see what kind of dive could be done, if any, and I don't know.
Well, my discussion with the county was W2, we may get to it. So, and they recognized the issues. So that makes sense, I need to prop this kind of mission.
I, I, yeah, I'm in favor of the footnote.
Okay, that's, that's all I need, does that make sense? Just footnote it and.
And leave the door open possibly with the language for a possible amendment down the road to it.
Yeah, all right. Okay, I will do that.
I'll work with you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, because, you know, I just hate facts, not being factual facts.
So, but, so I'm a bit, Dan and Chris still will work on footnote language for master plan?
Yeah. Okay. So the next item is, there's a request from a guy named Jim Wiseman to relook at the zones for two properties. And nothing we're going to get to today. And I emailed those to you, I'm going to cancel looking at those. The first one that came through, I just had a brain fart, I sent the wrong PDF, so the printout, and the, the one with this map is the updated version.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, my bad when I.
Is it what you gave us tonight?
That's, this is what I gave you tonight. This is the, the most up-to-date, what my thoughts were on the zone. And I also gave Jim copies of section 23 of the zoning ordinance, state step-by-step processes, what's needed. And it starts off with the township supervisor and planning commission chairs, somebody else, and somebody else having a first down, sit-down meeting to talk through this and all of that. So I pushed this back to Bart at this point, so that it's in his hands at this point.
Let's scrape it away, I skimmed over it. I can fill in the blank.
I know you can, it's not, it's not a big deal, but it just takes time and it's a required set of steps, so. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to be aware that we've got some things to look at. And, but what that also means is, at some point, we will probably have to have a special meeting to address this, and, and we're also going to need to have a hearing also. So there's all kinds of fun.
Yeah. Exhales and other stuff.
Yeah.
Careful about doing anything unique, or it's going to be a lot of work for, for everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, all right, the heart of what I really wanted to get to today is for us to keep moving forward with identifying, let's see, this is part of the last, the meeting in September, what are the strengths, weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats? Those are typical SWAT analysis. And the purpose of that is to identify what are strengths that we have that we can use as, for the master plan as far as we're building the future? What are the weaknesses that we have that maybe we can fix and/or that we can't fix or whatever and recognize? And then from that, what are the opportunities, okay, that we can put in, in this whole thing with the, the future plans? So what I thought I would do, okay, you guys all have a document, or actually two documents. One is the master plan facts document. I've filled trees, let me tell you. And the other document is my general thoughts on SWAT analysis, just for me to get even in the right direction.
These are the two documents.
These are the two separate documents, they have kept them.
That's the facts, and then this is his brainstorm.
Yeah. Okay, so I do want to go over some of the facts at this point. So there's a history, so we have a very wealth of history in this area that we could be looking at, but the entire history section is being reviewed for accuracy and completeness by a couple of people. The geology section and topography sections, they're pretty good at this point. Population is a key piece. Our population has been declining since 2010, which can result in a decrease in the number of homes available, which can lead to a collapse in housing values and tax revenues, and it generally, a rural decline is consistent with the national and state population losses. So we're not any different than anybody else in the country. We've got a declining population, and at some point, it'll catch up to us. Next one is age distribution. Our median age is 50.7, and we're approximately 20% higher, older than Midland County, which is 41.8. And so we've got a, a much older population, which makes sense, certainly there, because we have a lot of retirees. Approximately 90% of the older population, that's right, by using that correctly with, hopefully nobody takes offense of that, the older population. 90% of the older population wants to stay in their home as long as possible. But at some point, they may not be able to age in place, and for us to have a, be a good community, the township must be in a position to support their needs. There's physical changes brought on by aging, vision-carrying changes, cognitive decline, mobility limitations. Anyway, so we're all facing those at some point in time. The average age for transitioning into senior housing is 75. The average assisted living cost around the Midland area is $4,200 a month plus additional care services. We have declining birth rates, we have fewer rural and local family members available to care for the aging family members, and need to attract a younger population is really important for us, but we have to lower cost of housing, we've got to provide child, childcare, make sure we have jobs, and things that attract younger populations to be able to come in here. So again, this is where some of these facts are all coming together. The household size is currently at 2.36 people per household. The median household income is $71,638, which is $1,400 less than Midland County. So we aren't keeping up with Midland County's income. Education's good, we can support various industries and jobs because we have different skill levels based on our education levels. Housing type, we have 1,105 single-unit houses, 17 single units or basically apartments. We have 233 mobile home trailers. Housing structure.
Nearly 50%.
Start what?
It starts with nearly 50%.
Yeah, there goes 50. So nearly 50% of township homes are at or nearing 50 years old, which typically means it's going to cost more to upgrade them or to, for people to buy them and fix, those kinds of things. So, so beyond 50 years, repair becomes expensive, and the ability to modernize to today's lifestyle standards is diminished and expensive. Got to watch if people are continuing to move into existing housing stock or they're building new. If it's, their new residents are always building, the older housing then often become blinded. So it's unfortunate. Housing values, average, or the median house is 175,800. Housing affordability is with our median income, typically multiply that income times 2.5 or 3, and then our housing is affordable. So some of the numbers here are coming back that younger people should be able to afford our homes. We have a 95% occupancy rate for our homes. Median rent rate is $1,092, and the general income can withhold, or can stay, can handle that. We have one of the lowest crime rates in the nation. We have very good quality of life, considering the schools, the families, the jobs, the cost of living, our outdoor activities. So in section, or chapter five is where the metrics that I'm questioning is. But it looks like we have 1,985 township parcels for 22,000 acres, of which 40% of the land is zoned for R3 or R4. And by the way, we get very little revenue from R3s and R4s when you're state and county-owned. Mixed residential's 23%, agriculture 28%, commercials only 3%, and our residential R1 is only 3.43% of the entire township. And, okay, I want to go through those facts because there's some key things in there that should be able to work with SWAT analysis. So what I want to do, all right, let's go through from what you guys know, I don't care if you guys participate too, what are the strengths that we have in the township? What, what are great things that we have that we should be able to leverage to maintain or to improve?
Housing affordability.
Yep.
I think that's the bit, especially if we're trying to attract.
Yep, so low-cost housing, yep.
So we, we want to work to maintain that.
Yep.
95% of the owned, occupied by the owner.
Yep.
I think that's also a key.
That's a key.
Community.
I'm going to say the crime rate. I didn't hear you just go with crime rate. There's other places I've been. Okay. Obviously outdoor recreation, access to it, and hopefully. Unemployment rate is less than 2%, you know, what part of the country that, you know, which is great, unfortunately, with a 2% unemployment rate means there aren't people available to hire for other things. And we're all facing.
And also unemployed.
Pardon?
Could be unemployed.
And they could be unemployable, exactly. We have a very, see, 12% of our population are disabled.
Probably retirees.
Well, yeah, there's a whole lot of retirees.
We're not employed.
Yeah, yeah, not many of us work anymore, so. Is there anything else that, I mean, we've got a reasonable drive to and from work in town and Midland, and we've got access to arts and all kinds of balloons and all kinds of entertainment type things, so. I don't know, I just wanted, if there's anything you guys can think of, if anything else that you both can identify as a strength.
Well, the point you made of bringing young people to the community, right? There has to be something that's realistic to give, we can't just push it. So some of the kayaks, things that are age-appropriate, you know, but still have the youth in their mind.
Yeah.
Make their memories here, so somehow you gotta, have to tie some here. Some, it's tied in with all the stuff, short-term rentals, you know, you get a dozen of these kids together and rent them.
Long Island or something, someplace for the young people to go. Ain't no place for them to go.
I mean, we have so much state land, you know, they can go into the state land and have fun, they just don't know about. So there has to be some kind of an educational program to get, you know, kids of school age, you know, different community colleges, something like that. I mean, everything is marketing, so are we doing any kind of marketing to get people here? Because that's going to be what is already set.
Yeah.
That has happened over in this state. That community has grown, that was, it's kind of like the redheaded stepchild of Michigan for a long time. Now you go there, and there is festivals, and there is all kinds of things going on at night, and there's the school, and there's good employment over there, although a lot of it is service-oriented, but it's, you know, bringing a lot of young people there.
Right.
You can, you can see it, that, that community has a whole different vibe. It never is.
Which we don't have a downtown, so you can do events, being creative.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's work, but.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay. Since we went that direction, let's look at opportunities. And one of the opportunity pieces I put in. And one of the opportunity pieces I put in is we need to adapt to the needs, desires of our aging communities, and to help them age in place, to help them continue to live near their family and friends, support ongoing daily care, food, groceries, healthcare, transportation requirements that they may need, be able to care for the aging homes and properties, potentially reducing property values and increasing the likelihood of, oh, sorry, increase whatever. It's just helping with the, the home themselves. I need to relook at that word. Live-in handicap accessible homes. Okay, so, you know, one thought was, again, these are all opportunities, beginning off the, out of the sky. You know, can we get a developer that puts together some houses that are ranch-style homes with handicap accessible that our older people can buy into to open up their homes for younger families or whatever, have the homes located in a central location that.
Kind of like a fifty-five and older community.
Yeah, was a little suburban vision.
Yeah, this is the, at the focus group, one of the groups was another villages down in Florida, not to that extent, but have places for them to live, be a community, and bring in restaurants, bring in groceries, bring in transportation for them, which would free up opportunities for the housing. That's what I'm trying to get to for affordable housing. So, does any of that sound reasonable? Again, these are high-missed ideas, and I'm not saying the township would pay for any of that, that should be a developer-type thing.
I think you add the aging place to your list, I think that is an important, especially with the percentage in your bar.
I think the biggest problem with that is some requirements, fifteen hundred square foot for a house.
Those can all be changed.
Yeah, that's my caveat, you know, when I go, it's just me.
It would have to be a planned unit development.
Right.
Okay, which can basically go almost anywhere and has the flexibility to do anything.
Oh, does?
Yeah, so. Anyway, that's just an idea, again, we're looking for anything that. And also, part of that is neighbors helping neighbors, the big part of that, that, you know, have events that the community can do. Also, having the aging place of that near the EMS, because I know from my, taking care of my mother-in-law, how many times the EMS came to our house to take care of her, and being close to the EMS area, that would be very helpful for everybody. Possibly for senior residents, not having to pay property taxes, making homeownership more affordable, senior revenue, potential adoption of the Michigan House Bill four-oh-eight-one, which is on the bill now, which basically says that can increase the number of parcels that the first ten acres of the parent parcel or tract would be divided into increasing from four to ten parcels. That would allow our R-two areas that are in big land to subdivide more often in smaller places to, you know, for community to buy into. So, I don't know, I've heard, I know I've been doing all the talking here, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to come through with any other opportunities that, you know, that we can come up with, that. I mean, from a real estate side, what do people want? They want to be close to schools, they want to be close to the water.
At this point, it's really hard to know what the, the young people do want, yes.
Yeah.
Well, they want to be able to work from home.
You gotta have the, and there's one year old right now that want to be in Grand Rapids. Right, it is what it is there.
Well, I think that's the other aspect too, right? We want to attract young people, increase our population, but overwhelmingly at the focus group, they said, well, small-town, D O U.
Yeah, exactly.
So there's a balance there.
There is.
People that live in one of the, Grand Rapids and Traverse City and want to live.
Be in a small town. It's a good street, be in a small town, you know, and we're close to big towns, we're close to Midland.
And that's fabulous, yeah, our proximity.
That's a good street, because we don't have all that, that's why we're here. Get away from all that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'd like some time to do research on, on some of these and what maybe are other townships that I identified in these areas, like your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. I just haven't had the time, I was so focused on all these other documents, I didn't really get to this part yet, you know?
Okay, so where I am in the document at this point, I wanted to just kind of flesh out or at least continue the discussion going, what are our opportunities? And then from that, turn those opportunities, figure out how we can turn those opportunities into reality, and come up with those, then being our vision, our goals, and then putting metrics behind them with what are key performance indicators so that the public can actually hold the township accountable for, hey, we said you're gonna be at this level at this point, what do you do when you get back on track with that? So, you know, it's, again, I'm used to managing big things, so you never have a plan without measurable success.
Well, we can measure things like housing occupancy, housing affordability, right, and trying to keep those, well, housing affordability low and housing occupancy high, we could, those are measures, and I think that we should include those on opportunities, because we can have a program, we can do the marketing, but if they can't afford to live here, right? We don't want our, the, the housing to become so outrageous that
Exactly.
our children couldn't buy a house here. I'm sorry, I actually.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um.
It's New Year's resolution.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it's me.
In SWAT analysis, sometimes when you look at, as you look at the monuments, in other words, that things are, that are not movable, that are, are givens, that are there. If you look at the monument for our community, it's our location. We're centrally located between two beautiful big lakes. We're centrally located to a lot of natural resources that no other region has. So, I should do Venn diagrams with this.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I did this for a little while.
I love it.
So, so I think what I would suggest is, it's really nice to blue-sky and say, someone said to me, the demographics on the waterfront are going to be changing, and I said, really? Why? Why is it going to be changing? Why do we need to change? So I would, I would look at what the monuments are, all of the wonderful resources you have available in this region, and then say, how can we leverage use of these resources? And you can blue-sky all you want and, and say, you know, I'd like to have cobblestone come out here and, and build a, a senior condominium complex. They're beautiful in Midland. I looked at, and I won't move in any of them, I was senior. So I, I think if, if, when you do your vision, you make it so it's relevant to what we currently have and can build on it.
And that's where the facts come into, exactly, absolutely, you're right on top.
So our geographic location is perfect.
That's, yeah, that's one of our top strengths.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we have that past recreation area over there next to Johnson's storage unit that has all kinds of possibility for launches, kayaks, boat launches. We have a fishing pier here, so there are lots of resources that we already have that we can leverage.
Absolutely.
Also, how do we do, what do we do?
And.
Who does it, when do we do it?
Yeah, and that's where.
The five Ws.
Well, see, part of that is recreation, okay? Our job is making sure we have a basic plan in place, but not necessarily the execution of those things, because that, there's an entire.
Community is doing that, yeah.
I was gonna say, are you interested in joining the Russian committee?
Yeah, we, lucky you have one, have you? Yeah, no, I, we need anybody and everybody that's willing to help the township, so.
I need a riding stable too. Yeah, but, yeah, there's a riding stool, I mean, look at all the wonderful state land we have, we could use that. Oh, I don't know, the conditions are like that. And you may not be able to do that, I don't know.
Yeah, but I'm right now focused at what are the needs of our people.
Okay.
Because they're the ones who have to approve this.
Pro, adult program, you look at Gladham Library, and they offer all kinds of cooking classes for seniors. You look at the, the, yeah, Senior Center in St. Louis, and they provide, here's how you use your cellphone. I need that. Here's how you use the latest edition of software. We have Swanton Hall, it's a beautiful facility for yoga. So there's really, and here again, we can take a whole lot of energy.
That, that's one that I didn't consider.
Yeah. Exercise classes. Isn't that something that's valuable? I'm sorry, the reason I wouldn't volunteer, Crystal, is because I get very, very tense.
Okay, I can too.
Yeah, so.
I'm making your wheelhouse.
I'll tell you what, I would be glad to give you my email address, and if you have anybody, anybody has any ideas, shoot them to me. But my, I'm gonna say, my top idea or thought is, as we mentioned earlier, funding. Is we need to have a resource in my mind, a resource that is somebody that can be the liaison with the state, with the county, with our other townships, with our businesses, to help promote them, to look for grants, to help write the grants, and be the go-to person for the community to go to. We don't have that now. And, you know, so, but we've gotta have the funding to be able to do a lot of the stuff that we would like to do, and I don't know any other way to do that.
Look for volunteers, seniors are, they're talented seniors in the city.
Yes, they are.
They really are.
Yep. So.
Anybody want to report check?
Anyway, so, yeah, I mean, how do we get volunteers, you know, that kind of stuff, so? But that's the first one that has to come in, then the rest of the stuff can follow. Because, you know, the funding has decreased at year after year after year from what is coming in, and as we have fewer people, it's going to continue to decrease. So we've got to figure out how to get on top of this.
I'm sorry, Dean, stop.
Okay, anybody, again, if you guys have any thoughts, I just wanted to.
I like the idea of a media grant committee.
Yeah.
If you, if there, I, you're absolutely right, we have a lot of talented folks, some retired, some partially so, and some not. I've written a few, it, it just can't be something that I do on a full-time basis. So, so if there were folks who'd be interested in doing something like that, maybe we could tap into that talent pool.
Yep.
At least it's a place to start anyway, but even if the grant, even if the grant committee's initial charge or focus was really to just identify sources of potential funding for some of our weaknesses, right, or places we'd like to get to opportunities that we don't have yet, even if that's what we did, and then we could make the case, I'm kind of shooting my own self in the foot here, but we could make the case to the board to say, here's all these opportunities out here, if we hired someone, or, or something like that, we can break, we could triple, quadruple our money to cover it, I don't know. Just a thought.
I think the stuff for the aging community, there's not people that are aging and.
Different population.
Yeah, it goes right back to like, when it's time for them to go someplace else, who's gonna buy their house? If you don't have young people invested in this area and a good experience and something unique that comes with them other areas, you know, you can forget about it, it's gonna be a.
And one of the things I was thinking, this one person is the liaison with Dow with major businesses, so that as they're hiring people, we can help, have them help offset some of the expenses for renovations, that kind of stuff, and maybe even put in new employees, so we give them an opportunity or a place to, you know, put new employees, but, you know, you know, maybe temporary, whatever, but at the same time, you know, it brings in younger people.
Young professionals.
Exactly.
Way he's on the way. A moment starts, you know?
Yeah, they're young professionals, and they want to move into, pick a house on the lake, they're still gonna need maintenance, so it really has to be kind of like a pie chart of bringing young people. And then having a quality environment so they grow up to be quality citizens here, because there's plenty of places that somebody can hide. But the average young person moves how many times?
Yeah, it's a lot. So, yeah, I, it's, but that's where the affordable housing really comes in, and access to town with the universities and that kind of stuff, if they need those things too. All right, I've got it overboard, sorry.
He's done a ton of work, Dan, it's impressive.
Oh, thank you. So from my side, I will do the best I can with coming up with vision with primary goals and priority order. And then, once we agree to those or get, I don't have a general idea if that's about right, at that point, then put together key performance indicators and metrics to make it into a plan. So, by the way, I'm a black belt or seeker, lean six sigma black belt, so I've got to have the numbers and stuff to, so.
Salvo sphere here.
What's that?
A salvo sphere here.
Very good.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. All right, is there any, I'm gonna close it with that. All right, I guess, is there any new business we need to talk about? Any member comments?
I would just like to thank Danny Allen for all of the work that he has done. I mean, just to give you an idea, this is a draft of the master plan, it's fifty-three pages long, but he's. Right, I mean, there's just so much that he's done to put together to get us to where we are. I mean, it takes that team, and we're all helped and, and, and contributed in small ways, but nothing, no work that he did, and so I'm eternally grateful he's helping Bill really look ahead and, and plan, and it's gonna be a great master plan.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate, while I'm working together, I appreciate feedback from helpers too.
I'm the newest member of the group, was this my fourth meeting, maybe?
I think this is your third, this is my fourth.
This is, okay. And I, yeah, it's just amazing what goes on behind the scenes here in our township, and it's just great to be a part of it.
I'm learning, believe me, I'm learning, so I'm not doing it. I'm learning, believe me, I'm learning, so I'm not doing it perfect. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, move.
All in favor? You in the adjourn?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Hello. Hi, Mary, okay. Okay. Okay.
And we, this is the last meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Nice piece of.
That was the one that, you know, what we gotta do, but we wanted to make camp ground and bohong. Right there. That's us. That meeting.
Well, that, that meeting wouldn't have made me do that.
That's ambitious project.
We're all good.
Well, you've already got a comp, that's what's already.
So we want, you know, family, family, something that kids can build their farm.
We do know we got a lot of commercials and.
Well, not necessarily. Okay, look at the building award that's out there on the township, but. Because there's R one, R two, R three, so. R one, very specific what can be there, R two, R three, and those kinds of things. So, did my announcement next week?
Campgrounds are only a lot of.
Thank y'all for watching, it was a very relaxing, very educational video, and get this out there for y'all to watch more and more. We got a couple of Facebook pages and stuff, get some more input from the community on these subjects and these things that were brought up tonight. I'm sure they'd be glad to hear from you guys, Inville Township, Michigan, even if you don't live here. If you got some insight that could help this township out, or use some residents, some funds, whatever, let them know. We appreciate you guys watching. Till the next one, y'all here keeping it real, bringing the news that you wanna hear.